All right, we've got everybody in attendance, so we'll call the regular city council member here of November 18th to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Peterson?
Here.
Lindberg?
Here.
Nippert?
Here.
Shaven?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so we got the amended agenda. I'm assuming there's no changes since sent to us electronically?
No.
All right. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion, second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Lindberg.
We'll call Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Nippert?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any conflict of interest from anybody, please state if applicable. And now we'll jump down to consent agenda. These will all be enacted by one motion with the roll call. We have the minutes of our 11:04 council meeting. We have our claims list 1350 and the amount of $61,704.10. And we have the sheriff's statistical report for October 2025. Any discussion from anybody on anything?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Nippert.
Roll call Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Nippert?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, jumping down to other business. Resolution 2621, accept and approve the fiscal year 2425 annual financial report.
So this is the annual report of actuals, so...
Any highlights you want to share with us, or you kind of shared that when we did our audit review?
Yeah, it's just actuals. I just go through all our reports from last year and enter them in the right area and send it off to the Department of Management once you guys approve it, so...
Any questions from anybody, any commentary?
I just, is this something that's obviously it's required for the city every year?
It's required for every city.
Can I explain one more?
It's required for every city to do, every year.
Basically it just depicts out, lays out all the finances of what we spent on the purchase and all that jazz?
All our revenues and all our expenses.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
There are no more, I can make that motion there.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Nippert?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
Letter B, ordinance 2025-06, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlan, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to snow emergency violations. This will be our first reading. Hopefully in time for the snow for the third.
Do you want to go through the third, first, second, and third, or are you going to stop in second so we can be in time, or it just doesn't matter to me?
I would recommend at least going two times.
Two times, okay.
Yeah. And I guess to date, have we had any public input or questions?
No.
No.
Maybe discuss next meeting, when we do it, we'll discuss the second, third.
Okay.
And we're primarily just increasing the fine amount, correct?
Correct, because right now we can tow.
Instant tow, too.
But we're just adding that in there in an additional place, so...
Okay.
Additional fee and the potential to tow.
Yes.
Okay.
For a vehicle tow for that, is it full responsibility of the vehicle owner, or if they can't pay, does the city get billed for that eventually?
Um, all we do is call and have it towed, and after that, we have nothing to do with it. They have to come here and pay their bill before they can get their vehicle released.
Okay.
So once they pay, they find everything else that goes to the towing company, they can deal with it from their own?
Okay. What was the fee before we requested the increase? For now, for first point violation?
Twenty-five.
Did we request it go to fifty?
Yep.
Okay. Do we know, I mean, this might be more of a code enforcement statistic, do we know how many snow infractions are that we wrote last year?
We, we did write quite a few tickets during snow emergencies last year. So hopefully with an increase in cost of the ticket, that will...
Deter people from parking vehicles on the street. Because it's making it difficult for snow people.
Correct, yeah.
The snow plow around it and come back again.
Do they have X number of days to come in and settle that up before we go after, or is it just, it can become unpaid debt? I'm just curious on the background of that.
Um, after so many days, if we don't get it paid, it goes over to the courthouse.
Okay. And what's the next step for as far as that become like a judgment or something?
Um...
Effect of vehicle registration and stuff like that, too.
Yeah, they have to pay it before they can get their registration. And we were hand in hand with Carolyn with that, so... They send us checks when people pay over there, so...
Okay. Yeah, that was just my question, because if we're struggling to get people paid twenty-five, I mean, I understand the fact of going to fifty to make it obviously more, hey, that, you know, we need to... We need to move our cars and not parking our cars in one of the snow emergencies declared, but I just was curious in the backend of like, if we're struggling to collect that twenty-five, or if we're going to continue to struggle to collect that fifty, so...
No.
That was the reason for my questions, appreciated.
And we announce the snow emergencies via social media?
Yep.
On radio?
Yeah, and we, we announce the twenty, twelve to twenty-four hours prior. I mean, we're not going to leave work on a Monday night and say, oh, at eight o'clock Monday night, we're not going to announce that we're having one the next day. Like, it will be within working hours that we announce that there's one the next day, so...
Does that come across that Shelby County text thing?
I don't know.
Uh, that one, probably not, the title of that, that's maybe we can maybe discuss futurely with the sheriff to see if it's something that we can put out, that can go out to our registered users, but currently, right now, by Captain Butler, then would be the ones that would send those notifications out, and I don't have any direction to do that.
It usually goes on HMU, on Kennedy, on our sign-up front, and on Facebook.
Say just more, more ways you have it out there, less than one or so.
And I'm sure it wouldn't be an issue, I just want that clarification from the sheriff first, right, to that, I mean, it helps get the word out by all means.
Right.
Okay, well, I guess if I go further, I guess I'll go ahead and make that motion for three B, Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion by Lindberg, and second by Kroger.
Roll call Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Nippert?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to other reports. Jarvis, you're first.
All right, I'll just read mine here. On November 6th, I met with Jeff Hunt and Glenn from wastewater treatment. Plan to review the proposed changes with both wastewater treatments, large lease agreement and ample lease agreement. So tomorrow, we have an airport meeting, we'll go ahead and discuss those also too, but I said the documents the city attorney to review. There is a little bit of changes on wastewater area, but the airport is just going to stay the same, it's just the price per acreage is going up a little bit. But we'll follow the Iowa State reviews and stuff every year. So same contract, three-year, so... On November 7th, I met with Southwest Iowa State Administrative Group in Manning, Iowa. During our meeting, we exchanged updates on the current city projects, ongoing challenges and upcoming initiatives. We also discussed key regional priorities, including housing, economic development, and public safety. So those are the things that they're really focusing on other towns, so... On November 10th, I attended Library Board Meeting. November 12th, I had a RPA-18 Board Meeting in Council Bluff completed, and also online ICMA class. The topic is changes in the public sector focusing on recruitment and retention strategies. Also met with Chance Young from Atlantic Coffee Co. Bottling Company. We discussed the renewed existing contract that is due. And there were some few questions from the council members, was able to answer all those, and there was just a little bit of change in the contract that I had to send it back and say, hey, can we be able to implement these things or put these things back compared to 2011? There's some stuff we're taking out in the new contract, so he'll get back to me on that. On November 13th, I attended online ICMA class, also on efficiency, compliance, and control. Gaining valuable insight on organization best practices. And November 14th, I attended that's mentioned meeting. Uh, November 17th, I attended HMS Harland, Manona, and Shelby County Board Meeting. And had another separate meeting with Jason Schillert from Moscow to discuss the J.J. Jensen lighting project on Field 2, which you're going to touch base on that a little bit. Uh, today, Shelby County Board of Supervisor, Tim and myself, had a meeting again with Renee from the newspaper to discuss Dream Playground update. Had a park and rec meeting. Had a department head meeting today. And a few other things, I'd like to extend a special thanks to all the city employees and the volunteers that helped on the Christmas lights at the courthouse. Jackie from Pizza Ranch was able to give us free lunch there. And also, Sheriff from Creasing Rice Donuts was also able to give us donuts there. And then Sharon Lucky from Movie Theater was also out there helping get things done, so I'd like to thank them for their support. And I completed a closed-out project from the airport, it's a taxi lane project, I submitted all the documents to the FAA. And the airport will be receiving funds from the FAA, so I was thinking about $62,000 and some change that'll be coming back to the airport, so... That's all I got.
You want to give an update on the Dream Playground? No?
Oh, I mean, we are ninety, probably ninety-five percent complete on the project. We are just waiting, I mean, the weather has to be really nice in order for them to finalize the project, but they need a consistent of five days of thirty-five degrees or higher. So that's, I don't know if it's going to happen, but, you know, but the rest of the playground equipment is in place now, so...
Did you check every weather out until it gives you a five-day streak?
So the chances of opening the park probably this year is slim. It might go up to spring.
And that's just for the fall protection?
Yeah, yeah, fall protection, yeah.
They want five, oh, good.
Yeah.
Takes five days for it to cure.
Yeah.
About thirty-five for five straight days, so...
Did they do the rubber, shredded rubber, stuff again? Or no, we did the permanent?
This is going to be, what do you call that? The rubber thing doing?
Do we have our fall protection?
Yeah.
Not the recycled stuff, but it's a permanent?
It's a permanent, yeah.
Port in place?
Port in place, yeah. So that's what you need, five days, consists of thirty-five degrees in order for them to... And it's not only coming with the equipment, you have to have like a wheelbarrow going in there and spray it out and section and section.
Calcium in it, that will heat it up, yeah. Works in concrete.
I don't think they use a heat blanket either.
I know, I have one digging up for that.
And then, you want to touch base on the J.J. Jensen lighting project?
I can.
Okay, I'll let you drive.
All right, so those have been by J.J., we'll give a shout out to our Parks Department who got the trees cut down relatively quickly. And look at Joe and your team, HMU came down shortly thereafter and pulled some poles and cut the right ones off, which is very appreciated. Yeah, they jumped on a little faster than someone was anticipating, so he's hoping they'd cut the right ones. So if there may have been down there, you'll see there's no lights on Field 2. That's all kind of tore down right now, so we want to give thanks for the partnership, I call it, with HMU and the city, working together, because I think you guys did, you guys did some pole training at the same time, and also the pole removal, and it's greatly appreciated that we had that cooperation and assistance. And that's all I really got for say on that one.
Yeah, the lights have been ordered, so we're, you can wait, it's like six weeks, so, to receive those.
Close, yeah.
Close to, yeah, so, pretty soon I'm going to have lights there, so...
Care to say anybody wants to do like a fall softball fundraiser, just for the heck of it, under the lights, we could figure something out? Um, so that's all I had for the mayor's report. Jay didn't give me nothing else, but that was just nice community things, and I know the people working on the park were, they're all weekend, taking advantage of the weather. So is our city team, by the way, too, so they're out there participating, so we appreciate their efforts on that large project. Now we're turning it over to Todd, Shelby County Chamber.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, just some items to note. Uh, if all goes as anticipated, we'll be placing the Christmas tree on the courthouse square tomorrow. And should be taking place around nine o'clock in the morning is when they expected, you know, beginning the tree here. And then we'll have coffee, I mean, coffee, hot chocolate and donuts for them to encourage them along as they're, as they're putting the tree up. Um, and a reminder that that then ties into Saturday, the 29th, which is Small Business Saturday. And so we encourage everybody to shop locally for some of their holiday gifts and holiday decorations. Any business that wants to have extra things in their window regarding Small Business Saturday, we used to pass those out. But American Express has changed the program now, and all you got to do is log into their website and order what you want, and they'll send it to you. Um, and then the tree lighting ceremony itself will start at five, when Santa arrives on the square. And then we'll light the tree, Santa will visit with the kids, we'll have hot chocolate and cookies for the kids. And then, weather permitting, we'll have trolley rides from Hanson House to around the square. Reminder that the West Central Community Action Adopt a Family Program is now active. Um, so you can visit the Harlan newspaper to see the families that are looking to be adopted. Families that would like to put in to be adopted, they have to do that by Monday, December 1st. And that's families with children ages eighteen and under, or seniors ages sixty-five and older. You have to reside in Shelby County, and you have to either be at the two-hundred percent of the federal poverty level, or be eligible to apply. Uh, we have a grand opening and ribbon cutting coming up on December 4th at four o'clock. That's going to be right before the Harlan High School basketball game. And it's going to be for the Cyclone Brew, their new food area that they have inside of the, of the high school for, not only for the kids during the day, but also that's, you know, for during the ball games and stuff, and wrestling matches and things that take place. So again, they'd like to see as many people from the community as possible come on down and check it out. Uh, there are the Santa letters that tradition is continuing this year. Uh, if your child wants to write a letter to Santa Claus through the Harlan newspaper, the deadline is Thursday, December 11th. They can also include a photo, but when they send their Santa letter, they need to also make sure that they include their name, their hometown, and the name of their parent or parents. Uh, we're going to have a nice event Friday over at Milken Honey, it's called Classy Country Crazy. It's a clean comedy show. Um, it's being put on by the Western Iowa Arts and the Harlan Community Theater. Uh, this is a group of three comedians that have just recently appeared in South by Southwest, that's a big performance thing that takes place down in Austin. And you can get tickets for that, it's twenty dollars for adults and ten dollars for kids. They're available at WIAA.LUDUS.com, or you can also get them at the door. And then Sunday, Shelby County Catholic Schools Tribute to Harvest will be taking place from five to nine, they'll have a cash bar. Then they'll have Staley's Ticket Dinner from five to seven. It's fifty dollars per person, and you just pay at the door. They'll also have some auctions, and they're going to have a five thousand dollar cash giveaway drawing, and those tickets are fifty dollars each. And all of the proceeds that are raised that evening go to support the Shelby County Catholic School. So that's what we have for this evening.
Questions? No, thank you, Tom. Your turn, Joe.
Hello, everyone?
Hello.
A couple of dates, there again on the overhead-to-underground electric conversion project. Contract are still waiting, or waiting for their concrete subcontract to come back and finish some sidewalk work. Otherwise, that job is pretty much finished. Uh, raw water system improvements project, Holstein Electric has been working on electric controls within the new well, thirty-five to deep well. They're about eighty-five percent complete, eighty-five percent, ninety percent done. Um, right now, they're, McCarthy Trenching then had finished up all the piping work within that building, too. Everybody now is waiting for the pump motor and pump to be delivered and installed. Uh, the thought is, or the schedule is, that that pump and motor will be shipped tomorrow, I think they're looking at the nineteenth, that that will get shipped. And then Cohoy Pumping Services subcontract that did the well is looking at being onsite the week of Thanksgiving to install that pump and motor. And then Holstein Electric will come back in, kind of finish their electrical work to get that pump hooked up. And then HOA is the integration company, they'll be onsite to program the controls of that pump. We're looking at startup of December 2nd, actually starting that pump up. So we'll have her online shortly after that. So things will look good as far as that well. Uh, in combination with that, the test well for Well 35, which we can, are trying to convert or planning on converting to another production well. Uh, we found out that the water tests from Well 35 are back. And I guess we're going to talk to the DNR, it sounds like they're going to allow us to use those water samples or test results from Well 35 to be used for Well 36, since they're in close proximity. Uh, so that kind of saves a step and saves us some time there also, so... Looking to have a construction permit to be able to kind of finalize everything with Well 36, probably first part of December also. And I think I mentioned before, those two wells together will be adding about eleven hundred gallons a minute to our system, so we're about double on our capacity. So that's looking, which is going to be great. Uh, our ID TV offering, still having the community dates every Tuesday, so we're encouraging customers to come in on Tuesday evenings, four-thirty. Uh, to come in and if they have any questions as far as converting to the new ID TV offering. Uh, also can stop by during business hours. And then as far as, I think I mentioned, we got everything switched over on our telephone conversion to the new SIP offering. Um, just got a few things to kind of finish up on that. And are heading there at the office, if everything's working well on that. Any questions for me?
Big project almost done.
Yes, yeah, it's looking good.
Two projects, right?
Yeah, two of those, it'll be great. Yeah, great to have them in place. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Butler from the sheriff's office, if you...
Uh, for, we had three accidents, twenty-two traffic citations, one hundred and fifty-two traffic warnings, fifteen arrests, one criminal mischief, no deaths. One hundred and one contacts, six welfare checks, six residential or business alarms, and then four animal complaints. Questions do you have for...
That's just Harlan, right?
Just Harlan. Yep, does, all the numbers you gave is just Harlan out?
Any notices or awareness for the public, I mean, wintertime probably for everybody else that's out driving their snow removal would be another one, but...
On the animal complaints, are any of them cats?
Uh, yeah, we have had cat complaints, but I know that you guys as a city don't do anything with cats, so...
No, we don't. It's, well, how do you...
They're, they're stray cats all over the place. If you were to collect them, that would be a full-time job for us.
I'm curious if...
Yeah, the wolf, uh...
Ravens.
Ravens?
Ravens.
There is a crow hunting season, but you cannot fire firearms inside a city hall. You get a special response.
Somebody told me, yeah.
Wanks, to scare, scare them away that, that city hall issues. Um, and then they tell us that, that those are, but, yeah, you can't shoot a firearm in a city hall.
We just have someone used to take stray cats?
Does that include BB guns?
BB gun is not a firearm, because of, there's no gunpowder, so it doesn't fall under the classification of a firearm. So unless there's a city ordinance specifically named you then, you would be allowed to do that in your, in your city hall.
Good to know.
Get your red rider out, thank you. Or give it on your list for Christmas, right? Uh, same thing with like bow and arrows, too, those would be allowed unless there's a specific city ordinance against it.
There could be some live traps coming up in the neighborhood there, Sharon, you never know?
That, that'd be great, Kyle.
Does the city still do live traps, or will they give you a look at or something? There was that one time.
I think too, but still does it sometimes.
Things still going okay?
Yeah, very well.
According to plan? Everybody staffed?
Yeah, we're full staffed. Say that.
Say that out loud.
Yeah, we are.
Kyle's not.
Yeah. You want to apply for the data, this is the only system.
Yeah. Uh, Jarvis Ashley, a quick question here, I guess why we have Captain Butler up on there. I don't know if maybe we could take this opportunity real quick, maybe to, just to put out to the public, for the public people who watch this on the digital recording, the protocol as far as for what animal complaints and how they're handled and what they should do for our city ordinance, or if this is something maybe we can push out on our social media? Um, I'm speaking for both hats here, I, I can say for the fact, I mean, I know we get some that come into city hall, but then I get, I know that we get a lot of people that will call into the sheriff's office as well as too. Um, you know, about an animal complaint, a dog at large, you know, prime example, we had a dog loose yesterday that attacked another dog in reference. And just to establish some certain protocol as far as like the response of eligibility of like, who is the responsible party to that? I know I think maybe sheriff's office assists, but do we have a designated person that would be on call? I mean, besides Tim, or I can't remember the Jones name or whatever?
Tony.
Tony, Tony could...
Tony, correct.
And Tim Miller.
But, you know, the fact that nobody's available, but just to reiterate to the public as far as like, what is the proper channels for people to call in who have animal complaints? Or who have, you know, a vicious dog at large? Um, and follow up on that, like, some continuational calls where we're continuing to give warnings? And does it appear to be repercussions for these continued complaints of these dogs really at large?
We can put something on social media? We'll put something together?
Social media and also to a next council meeting, can have, show the script and who's responsible and what, contact numbers and all that stuff.
If there is a vicious dog, then we respond to those, and so the city, or the community should call us, instead of try and call city hall first. But like, if it's a dog actively attacking people, they should call us. Dogs attacking other dogs, you can call us as well. The problem with calling us on vicious dogs, we don't have the catch equipment that Tim and Tony have, so like, we're going to be able to separate them? But that would be about it. Our guys regularly have been taking dogs to the pound after hours, if it'll just jump in the car with them, right? You have a dog at large, and then they call Tim or Tony, and I don't know, let's come center, then hey, we can put a yellow lab in the pound. But vicious dogs, we go to, and then anything, just a dog at large, it's usually handled by Tim and Tony.
Thanks.
Appreciate that, I'm just basically saying for public education, this is key, so, thank you.
A little did you know?
Thanks, Captain Butler.
What else you got?
Appreciative, as always.
Thank you, I'll go back to training.
Thanks.
I just want to add, we're still taking an application for the code enforcement officer, application deadline is November 21st, at four o'clock PM, so...
So a couple of other tidbits from our noon meeting at the parks, I think it's interesting to say, people mentioned that, you know, we cut trees down at Pioneer Park. I think we planted thirty-eight trees there, is what we just planted recently, is that correct, thirty-eight? And then also for public knowledge, in J.J. Jensen, you'll know there's three ash trees that were just cut down. Two reasons why, A, they're dying already, but then they got to make room for the lighting project that's going on, so... Just so public's notice, if you're down there looking, it looks way different at J.J., because the trees are gone at the moment, so... Any comment from maybe else, or in the public?
None from my chair, Morgan, Mayor, pro tip.
Nobody else? All right, call meeting adjourned. Thank you. All right, call meeting adjourned. Thank you.